You guys always hide in the back room? Tucker, who's your wife?
Jennifer Bell.
That's it.
My mother-in-law said she saw you.
Yeah, that's it.
You weren't invited?
Oh.
She was my wife's.
Yeah, my mother-in-law.
Yeah. Now, your father-in-law?
It's Dave.
Oh, of course, I know Dave. Now, Dave is Matt's next youngest brother.
Good family.
Did you surprise your wife pretty good?
All pretty good. It's all good.
Corlin?
Hi, sir. You know.
Mr. Charlie, how did your planning commission meeting end up there? I had to leave for another.
Oh, well, I think it actually, I think it went really well. So the planning commission.
You seem, you didn't have a lot of people online.
No, I think we had a maximum nine people and they had three people in the room. So they'll just be here to complain about it when.
Isn't that how it works?
That's the way, that's the way it works.
I'd like to figure, we kind of chortle about that, but I'd love to figure out a way to educate him a little more because I think most reasonable people, once they understood the real fact, that'd be, that'd probably turn into five pipers for us. And of course, they have to invest. A lot of people don't have the ability to invest the type of time and energy that we do in those issues. But once they get it and understand and realize there's really not a lot of options available. Best options are usually the way we decide to go. I hope.
Well, I'm kind of hoping maybe the lack of interest has something to do with that. That we put enough public information out there, education out there, that maybe some of the more passionate people are, or passionate anti-growthers are seeing it just a little bit differently now. But we'll see as soon as we go to our first public hearing, which we've got.
We minimize that. I bring over that box.
You didn't have any more public.
And then there's.
How, open how to do.
You can minimize that.
We could if we need to.
I'm not sure we get anything out of it.
Yeah, all right, everybody. Boy, you've got a whole entourage here.
Yeah. You've got your whole group with you tonight.
Sorry, but I had to take a break. Been drinking.
It's good for you.
All right, who's here? Who's going first? Steve, you, you're kind of speaking up, so go ahead.
Last week, there were a few items that were brought up in the, in a work session and you asked us to have another work session to address some of them. Yeah, I guess the biggest one, maybe we talk about first is road impact fees and the intersection of Old Snow Basin Road and Highway 39. The question was if we can use road impact fees to improve that because UDOT is, I guess, the road study says that a turn lane needs to be provided. There was a question on whose responsibilities to pay for that.
Oh, yeah, I'm with you now. We're talking Old Silver Basin Road.
Yep.
I'm with you. Well, yeah. So what did you decide, determine?
So.
Have you looked at this as a group?
We have, yeah.
Mr., what do you call him? Wonderful.
Amazing.
Corlin told us.
Yeah.
You know, I met his wife Thursday night. She's a hell of a nice to be in. Really nice. Go ahead, Corlin.
I'd better say it, because it's Valentine's Day, right? She's watching, got two. So roadway facilities are specifically defined in the impact fee code and it talks about what we can do with state and federal highways or roadways. So first of all, it has to be designated on an officially adopted subdivision plat roadway plan or general plan of the county, together with all necessary appurtenances or improvements. It includes associated improvements to a federal or state roadway only when those associated improvements are necessitated by new development and are not funded by the state or federal government. So if the state is not going to fund the improvements and if they're caused, the need for them is caused by new development, then if we have it in our impact fee facilities plan and if it's part of our transportation plan, then we can use impact fees to fund those improvements. So those are the criteria that have to be met.
So the flip side of this, then, is that would make it appropriate to put in, charge impact fees in those areas to fund that?
If it's on our plan, yes. If it's in our impact fee facilities plan.
So is it in there? Now, these are projects.
So we'd have to amend the plan to be able to start charging.
So impact fee. Development?
Impacting plan.
A plan.
A plan.
So what is our plan designed for today?
So it was done back in 2017 and it was based off.
Busy when you first got on.
Yeah. It was based off of a lot of the development you're seeing at that time. None of these developments were really in the queue or anticipated at that time. But essentially, what it has right now listed in it is a lot of different turning lane capacity type projects, particularly where there's roads where there really isn't a shoulder or a good pot place for the roads vehicles making the turning moment to get off out of the way.
So you qualify a development to put it in the queue? Everybody doesn't pay to the queue?
Everybody pays to the queue, but we designate certain roads or certain projects that, that could be funded out of what people are putting in.
So if everybody's putting into this and we're funding out of it, then that turns out just fine. Why don't we do the same thing with sewer impact fees? And why don't we do the same thing with these others?
We, we do. We have plans that go along with each impact fee. So we have projects and designated areas.
So is the sewer going to one fee or one fund? You just designate the bunches that are putting into it?
Correct.
Not everybody, huh?
And what, whoever built, when somebody pays for a building permit, they pay impact fees and part of those impact fees go to sewer, part go to trails, part go to roads.
Right.
Part go to storm.
And all that I understood. These deep ones that were out there that were char, that were offering money back to help them get extra deep? Are we charging extra for those?
Yes.
And they're going into that same fund as well? We're just keeping track of them separately?
I'd have to ask Scott, I think those are different funds, is that correct?
And I think they've split it up into lift stations and then the clutch.
Right, they are, it's a, it's a separate fund. So we know exactly what goes in there and we pull out of that to pay back the developer or whatever we're doing.
So are these road and impact fees, are they at all separated that way?
No, no.
Just one and everybody pays in.
Yep.
But I thought you just said that until we have, they're not in our plan, we can't use the road impact fees.
That's correct. So we would have to amend our plan to put specific projects into the plan.
So if we amend the plan, can we do that and use those funds for Snow Basin?
Yes.
Well, I'm of the opinion under what he just read, we can use those today.
You have to amend the plan.
It's not, it's not in our impact on the facilities plan right now.
Yeah, but you said, the last thing you said is if it is not being paid for by someone else.
By the state or the federal.
And.
And if the need for the facilities, the improvements is based on or caused by new development.
Which it is.
Right.
Then it.
As long as it qualifies. As long as it's part of the plan.
But it's not in our plan now. That's why you have to amend the plan.
That's a limitation on what we can use our money for on state and federal highways.
Well, so the reason I question that, Gage, is I have the opinion that every, every building lot that we, we put ought to be in the plan because eventually they all add up to a point where you have enough traffic, you have to do something with it. I mean, today it's one, but as time goes on, it ends up being 51 and then all of a sudden you got enough traffic, you have to do something with it.
I think there's main roads that definitely be included in there.
So if there's a challenge with doing that. When you create your impact fee facilities plan and your impact fee analysis, you've got to tally up the cost of all the improvements that you know are going to be needed, that you're going to be spending impact fee dollars on. So you get that big number, right? And then you take that number, you divide it out by however much you think you're going to get in new growth. If we took all of the public improvements that we know are needed, that number's going to be huge, way bigger than the impact fee that most communities have.
Right.
Just because our roads are so narrow and.
Because we have so much improvement to do.
Correct. But today, we're charging nothing and we're doing nothing because we don't know how to do it.
We are.
Yeah, we're charging on everything in the unincorporated county right now, the road impact fees. It's just a matter of what we can spend them on today.
Well, yeah, so I'm, well, of course.
And if you just look at unincorporated, you know, I understand what you're saying. And if you basically put a priority list on those roads, you don't have this huge potential liability out there.
So what we do in the trail impact fee plan, for example, we put Ogden Canyon.
Right.
Trail on the trail impact fee plan. So we can use money for the Ogden Canyon trail if an opportunity comes up. However, the dollar amount that we put on that trail was a million dollars. We know that, that Canyon's going to cost $10 million plus to build. We only put a million dollars because if we put 10 million bucks, your trail impact fee would have been $10,000.
Yeah.
And so we decided we'll spend over the next six years up to this amount of money.
Still has to make sense when it comes down to the individual person taking out that building.
Correct.
Right. Yeah, if you charge 10,000 per permit for fee, we're out of business.
Yep, so that brings up the other side of it. There's two double edged, it's a double edged sword. Because the other side is if you're not charging enough to actually bring in enough revenue to do specific projects, your, your SOL anyway.
Yeah.
There's no reason to be collecting impact fees.
You can't do anything.
Right, so what is road impact fee today? 1200. And then their sewer impact fee, it's under 2,000.
We're 600 and then additional, I think 600 in those station areas.
So six is six.
1,200 for those areas. If you're in the area with police station.
Yeah, and then of course with sewers different than all of our roads and stuff because only if the defined area that we're going to be able to service right now.
Of course, yeah, the sewer is.
We don't charge sewer fees up in the Ogden Valley.
We don't charge anything in the, in the Ogden Valley or anything, pretty much essentially west of the Weaver River.
Why wouldn't we charge in the upper? Pardon?
No sewer system.
Yeah, well, yeah, there, but there really isn't a sewer system. Of course, we're only charging on the sewer system and those that they connect out west.
They have the ability.
But we still ask, do you charge a inspection fee to go open and inspect them?
So we charge a 75.
Okay, I understand that. You're saying that there's really no other reason. All right, it says to me.
I guess that begs the question of, I mean, is that direction to the impact fee plan? To add this to it? Or do we want to make that entirely on the developers? That improvement?
What agreement do we have now to the developers? So in regards to the basin, that agreement's quite strong, actually, with that. We've got, we've got quite a bit of teeth in that one. In regards to Legacy Mountain, at this point, discussions we had with John early on on was that he would be willing to pay his fair share, his portion. But that was back in September when the opinion was by mission and everybody else that that was UDOT's issue to deal with. And it wasn't our issue to bear. Well, now our opinion has kind of changed a little bit. We have not had a chance to talk to John yet.
You may also recall with Osprey, we talked about a trim lane coming off of there as well. So if you wanted to, and in that meeting that we had with Eric Householder, who was here representing John, he indicated that, you know, they were planning on putting in the trim lane. But if we want to use some of those funds towards that, we'd have to amend the plan for that area.
Yeah, yeah.
So Silver Basin Road, Old Silver Basin Road. Today, we have 13 units going in on the corner.
10.
And. 10. Forgot. Yeah, going up the road, done John Lewis own a bunch of lots up there that are going to.
That's Osprey.
Legacy.
41 lots. Oh, Osprey's over by 40.
Legacy.
40.
No.
That's the one going up.
Is that not John Lewis?
That is.
Well, that's what I said, John Lewis. And the 10 lots. So your opinion is 41 and 10, so 51 lots? And then? Do we collect it? Corlin, this is where I struggle. Do we collect it by area or by subdivision? Because what is a patenting? If we collect it by area or by subdivision, then we improve this, make it nice, everything's ready to go. And then all of a sudden, other people say, that's really nice. Look how they've repaired that and fixed it. Let's develop that for now. And they are lashed in and they get to come in free.
Depends on how you choose to do that.
You see what I mean there? I mean, who, who comes in free? You reach a point where it requires it and then that guy has to shoulder the burden and everybody behind him gets a, a free pass.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't think that's so much a legal question. I think it's a policy question.
That's policy, yeah.
If you want money on the margin, is that the guy who's putting his product out in front of everybody? I mean, the guy who's going to get the patent or whatever it is he needs, he's paving the road for everyone else to make money, right? And people are going to copy him later on down the road. It just happens in the private market as it is. And he's the one putting all the investment out there upfront because he has a rate of return that's coming back.
But the guy who's putting the patent out, they can't use his exact length. They have to go vary it. Well, in this case, they're using the exact length. There's no variation from.
I, I, I don't have as much sympathy, I think, just because every road that exists out there exists because of development. Somebody else is paid to install that. And so anyone who gets access off of an existing road gets the benefit of the people who came before. I had this conversation with John Lewis a couple of weeks ago. He says, you want me to put $30 million into a road infrastructure so this one guy can get three lots out of it right next door? No, I want to put a blocking strip or whatever. He wants to keep people from next door getting access to his new road. I said, no, John, I want to put $30 million into the road so you can get 30 lots. That's what you're doing. Don't, don't worry about what the guy next door is going to do. He might tie in.
He might, yeah.
Yeah, so does, so does everybody else. That's just, that's just me, whatever your guy's policy position is.
Well, my thought that comes to my head here, and this might be off base. But when we do something like this, I almost feel like putting a five-year, because we have to spend those within five years, I feel like putting a five-year into that area and say, okay, for the next five years, anybody who comes in for a building lot on that is going to have to pay the additional fee that everybody else paid. That's only fair.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
And if they don't want to do that, fine, wait, you can wait his out. If you come in at two and a half and say, oh, man, I don't want to pay that, fine, wait two and a half years, you won't have to.
So the question with legacy, if we're collecting on a building permit basis for road impact, so wouldn't those 51 lots be required to pay into that road impact?
Yes.
Fee? So if you're charging John additional.
Is that double charging?
Not exactly. So the, the impact fee we're currently collecting was, like Charlie said, alluded to a second ago, was calculated based on the intended and planned improvements in the upper valley. Our, our impact fees are divided, upper valley.
Right.
Out west.
Right.
So we had, we had future projects that were needed and that's the value of those projects was calculated down to a per lot impact fee being collected. Now, when you get into a situation where you've got a large cluster of lots similar to a Legacy Mountain or a basin project that's putting a lot of higher stress in an area, that's where, that's where we're at the complicated issue right now.
The statute identifies them by system improvements, which is what you put your impact fees into versus project improvements, which is specific to a unique project. You can't charge extra. You can exact, I mean, part of exacting that street frontage, there's a value to that, that, that area that we're exacting and it's very project specific.
Right. But it also improves, this is what I brought up last week. For those people that have been there for the last eight, 10, 15 years, they're going to get an advantage because of the additional access as well. But they, to go to Commissioner Jenkins' point, they haven't had to pay for it.
Yeah.
So now they're, you know, they are the recipients of a gift, either from impact fees or from the developer, that they didn't ever have to participate in. So, and again, that's just, again, that comes with the way it is. But so if we're saying, look, what's the fair balance between impact fees and how much the 51 lots we pay? What, what's your suggestion?
What are you planning on charging?
Because I don't think it should come from just one source. I mean, I think I'm in favor of saying, look, let's decide how we're going to split this.
I think it would be worth asking. So we know that John has agreed to pay a, what, a portion of that, of what that is. I think we should probably ask him what that portion is.
Okay. Should we, should we take the impact of what, the cost, who knows it's going to cost, and divide it by 51?
I think what you'd want to do is you'd want to take the traffic counts of that intersection, find out how many cars are crossing it, how many cars can we attribute to the new homes coming into John's and into that corner development and take that ratio and say, that's your roughly proportion of share of the loan.
But that doesn't pay for it?
No.
So who picks up the difference?
So, well, I would say, I would go to the developer and say, that's your roughly proportion of share and I would take impact fees to try and pay for the rest of it.
So we'd use impact fees on whatever we consider to be the public portion outside the.
Well, the state just told us that in their case, they'd go make those guys pay for it 100%.
I don't think they'd be doing it locally if they did that.
Yeah, I don't think they.
Well, they just told us that.
They said that.
They just told us that. So, so that being said, Charlie, that would put roughly 80% of the burden on John's and 20% on the basis.
If it was 100%. If they did a rough proportionality test, so the only way that they'd be able to get away with rough proportionality, which is the test that you have to, to apply when you're dealing with exemptions like this, is it roughly proportionate to ask them to do? I think the only way that we can get away with making that kind of an argument is to say that the intersection, as it existed before John came in and before this three acre development came in, functioned fine.
Yeah.
And if that's the case, then, Gage, what you mentioned just a minute ago, all those, all those folks getting the benefit of extra access, that's, that's a, a moot issue because they, they're not getting extra access. They're getting improved access because there's new traffic coming through that intersection.
Well, I guess what I, my argument is that would be it hasn't been totally free of constraints because of all the additional traffic you have in the valley. I mean, there's a lot of times I'll travel out where it gets back, as much as making a left-hand turn there, you get backed up. So to answer your question, there's enough traffic going up into that subdivision and enough going north and south, but there has been an impact.
And in that case, if we can attribute.
And none of those lots have even started, they don't yet.
Right, I mean, even, what I'm saying is there's already an impact right now based upon the people you have in those.
Right, and so if that intersection is functioning well now because of the people you have in that subdivision, then your baseline is zero.
Right.
And then all the new traffic that John brings in and all the new traffic that the three acre development brings in, that's, that is 100% impact that.
Right.
And then UDOT's MO of requiring the developer to pay for it works.
Right.
Because that's 100%.
Yeah.
Roughly.
I guess what I'm saying is 100% is not equitable based upon the traffic you have there right now. Now, 10 years ago.
So the flip side of that is if, if you have somebody else participate in that, there's only one person, that's the county. And that means that all the rest of the taxpayers in the county are paying for that intersection. And that's not equitable either.
I agree with that. Yeah.
That's, that's the question I have.
Or, you know, the other argument to be made, is that a good source to use these impact fees if we amend the plan? Because I think that's what it's designed for, is to hit, hit these areas that if, so if you don't use the impact fees there, where are you going to use? That's always the challenge.
Well, hopefully, in the areas that those fees were embedded by.
And that's always the challenge. When, when you do these studies, when you do these plans and calculate it, you're doing your best, best guess, your best educated guess.
Right.
On where the girl's going to need to happen.
Right.
Who forced that? Put either of these developments triggering at the time this was done?
Nobody.
Well, not to mention all the people who've come up there to go to Art Nord and take the trail and all the other visitors we have going up there, you know? There's a lot of use up there. You're correct, Commissioner.
So do we know how many dollars are in that impact, road impact fund today?
We do. We do. I don't know that number. Scott Park has it.
You approximately know that number?
No, but we can, we can get Scott, he was going to come back here.
Yeah, it would be nice to have an idea what.
Yeah.
Charlie, what did, what did they estimate the cost of that? So they estimated it about 600,000. To be honest with you, I think that number might be high. And here's why I think that. They estimated it as if you not were to go do the job themselves. So that adds a lot of cost onto that that really doesn't need to be there. If, and I'm throwing this out as a, for instance, or what-if scenario. If we approach John, John has a contractor he uses all the time, asked him to do the word, I think it would come in significantly less than that, probably to the tune of 300,000 roughly, give or take a little bit. And I understand that's a broad brush estimate, don't hold me.
As I say, we know that you're not going to inspect it and you're not going to improve or require it be done a certain way.
Correct.
So be careful what you're saying.
Right, and that's why I say this, this contractor he has actively does you not work today. So I think we'd be able to get some fairly safe estimates.
If Bren's still on, he is a UDOT inspector.
Bren?
Yeah.
Well.
I don't know if you want to comment there or not.
So Bren, you're on here. Can you add anything to this conversation? They say you are a UDOT inspector. Bren Edwards.
I, I'm a UDOT inspector when it relates to stormwater stuff. When it comes to full-on construction improvement and stuff like that, we do have an inspection group that'll handle that. But yeah, if it has, I mean, if they are a UDOT approved contractor, they do other UDOT jobs, I don't see why they wouldn't meet the, the specifications that you not would put out there for them to come in right away and do that type of work.
Right, so they'd still have to build it to your, to UDOT's structural requirements.
And I, and Bren, correct me if I'm wrong, this is Gary speaking up again. We could work with you to have to determine what those requirements would be. I'm speaking about gradations in materials, grades of asphalt, widths of the road, utility requirements, that kind of stuff. And I think we could come up with a much more refined, nailed down, probably less estimate than, than what we received initially.
Yeah, I mean, you know, our payment engineer is going to be the one that'll work with you the most. And when it comes to those type of things, yeah, I'm sure, you know, if, I mean, big for all of them, but I would think if Weber County brought a project to the table, they're going to be a lot more, you know, willing to work with a neighboring agency as, you know, just like a permit contractor.
Correct, good point, good point.
Corlin, do you have any idea what happens if state funds are brought in?
No.
Eliminate the ability to use impact fees or is there a, choose your venture options or down?
I guess it, it depends on how you define a roadway facility or an associated improvement. If you're talking about specific improvements being paid for by the state and other improvements being paid for by impact fees, that could be doable if they're separate improvements. I don't think you could mix the funds for a single improvement, but I don't see a reason why some couldn't be paid for with one and others with the other.
Okay.
Some being.
I don't, I mean.
If you that was willing and able to contribute to this in a portion, that's doable?
I mean, is this divisible into separate parts like right turn lane, left turn lane, widening? I mean, I don't know how that works as a practical matter from the construction and engineering standpoint. I, I don't know.
Possibly.
I mean, we probably don't need to go down that wormhole today. That's a big one.
Yeah, I don't think that. But this averages out, be right around $12,000 a lot. A 600,000 bucks. And I, I'd say that's probably realistic.
Could be. You're, you're using the 51 lot.
Yeah, I divided that by 51.
There's land on the other corner that's no base.
The old Silver Basin. Yeah.
Which one? Do we know how many?
On the east, east side of Old Silver Basin Road, south.
Not commercially.
Oh, is it? Is it, is it FR3? FR3.
Yeah, we did it both, right there.
Okay. And what does that far three allow?
Residential, so like 6,000 square feet.
But that would not allow apartments or.
They would.
It would allow.
If they could get access to sewer water, right now there isn't a sewer system that can help on.
Yeah, that's, so you don't think uh, the sewer systems there would, would allow them to come in?
They didn't allow uh, the guys across the street to get more than thirteen connections.
Right.
Yeah, and actually, I can't remember if that was.
No, that was sewer. All right.
Water as well.
Would you like us to, you want some time to think about it, and maybe we come back to you on it?
Well, so Courtney, I hear you right, you don't see that you could mix the funds, impact fees and then some private money? You see it has to come from one or the other?
Well, to me, it depends on. What I guess counts as an improvement, because. It divides it up into improvements, so it says, when the associated improvements are. Not funded by the state or local government, so I think if you can say these improvements are going to be paid for by. The state or federal government, but not these other improvements, then you can use the impact fees for the other improvements, it looks like. Is based on the way the statute is worded.
Okay, but your question was private versus impact fee, John, John versus.
Well, but no, it's, Corlin answers basically, can you have a combination of, and it, what it comes down to is what improvements we're paying for.
Right, but if it's private, like the developer paying and the impact fees, those could be mixed, where some of the money comes from impact fees. Some of the money comes from the exaction from the developer.
Right, I get it, okay.
So Scott, can you answer the question?
What's the question?
The question is, how much money is in the road impact fee, number one, and number two, do you divide it between upper and lower valley?
Same question, yes, I do divide it between upper and lower. Upper Valley as of the end of the year had five hundred and eighty-three thousand. Lower Valley at the end of the year had.
About.
Six hundred and nineteen thousand. Approximately six hundred thousand. So we haven't combined those two because they're separate impact areas, right?
Trails, okay, trails that we have.
Other projects are we planning on impact fees in six years, other than the turn lane on River Drive?
So, definitely that one, um, forty-one hundred north is coming. Right?
I thought John was paying for that, now he's paying for some of it.
I thought we submitted the funds for it.
Well, forty-one hundred north is being paid for by Waco.
So we're doing that for Cog.
Hey, friends about.
Well, so.
I don't think so.
You can see. You would consider a fair amount of this property up Old Snow Basin Road as undevelopable. But with the price of property and the, that it's going for right now. I don't think that's a fair tag up there anymore. I feel like there's a fair amount of that property that really. You say, well, man, they'd have to move all the hill, or they'd have to do this or that, well, under the circumstances, they could afford to do some of that now.
John's already moved a few hills.
Yeah, well, with the price of it all. So, uh, I mean, in John's case, we've said, look, we won't accept that road for an extra year to make sure it's gonna settle, we don't have an issue. But other than that, that was the only impact we put on that, right? Do you remember, wasn't that the only?
That was the major one.
Yeah, we just extended that, uh, accepting that out one more year, to make sure that it wasn't gonna settle and move it. So based on that, I suspect there's much more area up there that's developable. So you could, you could actually say anybody who developed on this road is gonna share some kind of an impact fee for five years.
You're, you're talking about Old Snow Basin Road?
Mm-hmm, top to bottom.
And you just say for five years.
Well, the reason I say for five years is because in five years, we have to, we have to pay for, you know, you, I don't know. I mean, we have to spend the fee, money you get in five years.
A lot easier way to account for impact fee spending is spend the money and then pay yourselves back. And so when you say.
Pioneer type deal.
Right, when you say, uh, if, if we don't do it this way, then the general taxpayer are gonna be paying for the improvements there, that doesn't have to add up. You could put that money into it, and I don't know, but working through the wizardry with Scott, but. Uh, put that money into that investment and then have future impact fee dollars paying this back. It's kinda like upsizing a, a pipe in advance and then paying back uh, for that upside.
Become really hard to keep track of them, that's exactly what he said, is exactly what we're doing on this sewer out there.
Yeah, that's a lift station.
Yeah, it's a lift station, that's exactly right, Gage.
Yeah, I mean, we're negative a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars of impact fees in our lower value wastewater because we advanced all that money. And now it's gonna be how many years before we.
Well, we've got a second lift station, ready to come in right now. And there's no money.
Fun balance. Because the impact fees are their own separate funds, we just don't have the money to do it.
Yeah, I guess the reason I bring that up is because if you're looking at the different buckets of money to fund out of, you've got impact fees today, maybe you got a little bit from John, the developer. Maybe a little bit from you dot, if that's even possible, and then if you've gotta fund the rest with county dollars, do it and pay yourself back. So you still have all those.
Right.
Options.
But by doing that into the sewer fee, just like you said, we're upside down a hundred and ninety-five thousand already in the very first one.
Yep.
Yep.
It'll come, but it's.
So on the very first one, did he pay his impact fees in?
I have to go back and look, I don't know exactly.
Oh, so as they come in by permits, they. I'm with it, that's when the impact.
And then a little more than cover the deficit.
No, no, not more, but we'll add, build out, it'll cover.
Build out for sure, yeah.
We cut this, you know, uh, Corlin alone, he lets collect so much.
Com- Commissioner Harvey, to cover that lift station, we created a secondary.
Okay, yeah, just, just, I thought we were gonna roll the like by ten or fifteen percent, we rolled it by ten or fifteen when it's all said and done.
Can't do that, can we?
Well, no.
Yeah.
But, I mean, who, who knows what's actually gonna end up.
You're trying.
And we tried to get it the best we could, right?
What would your wife say? Would she say yes? She's missing.
So, uh, you know, Plain City, these, these districts. They do the best they can to uh, get to where they need to go, and then they just charge the fee, and that's just the way it is. And I suspect most of those are over a little. But, and you know, from every four or five years, they raise their impact fees and it's like, oh. How do you know that that's what the impact is? Well, you know, they really don't know, but they take the very best guess, I mean, you know, their guesses, but they do the best they can to run the numbers to. Get as close as they can, well, that's kinda what we're doing here, the best we can, and we don't represent this anymore than that, do we? It just isn't an exact science.
Chris, I would, I would suggest that it's closer to an exact science than maybe what you're thinking, because we can calculate. It's a level of service, right, it's just same thing as a pipe, but a pipe is the easiest thing to explain it, you know how much fluid can get to that pipe at any given point in time, and you know how much pipe is. So if you know how much you can serve and how much the pipe costs, that's a, that's a direct cost. Now, the, the only variable I can think of is inflation and increased costs over time, which that's, that's a variable. But every other aspect of this, I think it's calculable, based off of level of service.
Okay, but you just pointed out the very ones that are not calculable, inflation. What's that's gonna cost, right now, inflation's off the chart. If we just started this two years ago and tried to figure it, then they, we'd have missed it a mile.
Or the simple fact that no one ever thought the individual that originally owned the land would ever sell it, and due to. Talking and making a deal with John, John agreed that he wouldn't develop it to the full potential.
Which he hasn't.
Which he has not, he would do it in a much more reserved manner, which made it to where the original landowner suddenly felt like, hey, this is a better, the best scenario. For this land, that's, that's one of those tangibles that you'll never anticipate.
You're saying why John would come in with a hundred?
That's right, that's right.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
So it's really challenging, that's why this particular improvement was never originally on the impact fee plan. Because at the time, the individual that owned it would never sell it, no one, didn't matter how much he was, no one would, no, he wouldn't sell it.
Well, I can tell you, if you're going down that road, you're going down the wrong road, because eventually.
I know.
I don't, everyone, what, what the owner tells you today, that there'll be a generation or two down the road, all the property will be sold.
Yeah.
So, I'm just telling you a fact, but you look at the valley, the last fifty years, I've talked to a number of people that said, this property would never be sold, guess what? There's now homes sitting on it, so.
And that's where we're at, where we're at today.
Yeah.
So, do they, uh, let me look at that here, Steve, in this case, are they tying up the rest of this? So we know in this case on these parcels, we're talking about a John's, that there'll be no more development?
No, we're not tying that up.
Yeah, he's just saying today he's developing forty-one, and maybe twenty years from today, well, it's all sold and it's out from his. Purview, and they start coming in and saying, okay, I bought a hundred acres here, I wanna put four more homes on it.
So what he would like to do, what John would like to do, my understanding, is bank the number of units that he hasn't developed and transfer them. Now, if he does that successfully, then yes, he will have retired those.
What, what he told in previous conversation is he would take that it exists, he'd take whatever density he's not using, transfer those, they come off the table at that location.
Right.
Not that they couldn't go somewhere else, but off of that particular property, there wouldn't, would be no further building.
But.
It's gonna have to do it before he sells it in those lots, so he's having to race to get it done.
Those are T D Rs that you would, under theory, normally put in to this intersection. They'll pay for it.
True. Yeah.
Well, if that's the case, then I can have a clear conscience and say, let's divide it by fifty-one.
Fifty-one for the whole thing?
Yeah.
Gary brought up a good point, that while John's subdivision was going through, we had this conversation of whose job is it? To pay for this intersection.
Right.
And the direction, and, and, and I guess the final result was, well, if you dot, we'll, we'll let you dot handle that. And now, after talking with you, it sounds like, well, if you not handles it, it might never actually happen. And so John's recorded a subdivision, which that's normally the time we would ask for these improvements to be given, this money to be given to us.
That's a problem, we don't have any legal.
We, we might, right, well, I think we've only issued one building permit for his own house. And I don't know i- if we can, you know, not issue any others until we get that, those in, essentially, we, I guess we. Uh, we can't call it impact fees, but the road.
So, we didn't have that discussion.
We did, in a, in a work session, we went back and looked at that, and the direction that we received from the commission was, that's you dot's deals. And we don't wanna deal with it, county's not putting money into that, so let you dot deal with it, but then we talked to you dot, and you dot says, well, we're not doing it, we make the developer do it. So that changed your perspective.
Well, of course, the second discussion you talked about just took place.
But.
Yeah, that's a problem I have with it, is that we should have, and I, and I understand the mechanics, this timeframe didn't work out.
Correct.
But now we're going back to developer and saying, okay, we approved you, and you're all ready to go, but now we need another six hundred thousand.
Right.
That's kind of a kick in the teeth.
Yeah, what about creating a special impact fee area that just includes his project and this project, or any other project that comes in online?
Well, you know.
Then they're paying.
These are road impact fees that pay when they buy their building permit. That's life, we, they owe a forty instead of forty-one. They haven't bought those yet.
So in order to do that, you'd need to essentially increase your impact fee for the specific lots.
Yep.
Otherwise, the impact fee money that they're paying into the system is paying into a system of other improvements that doesn't include this.
That's right, see, that's what I'm saying, that's, if, if we do that, if we let, say, okay, developer, you gotta pay the six hundred grand, plus we're gonna start, we're gonna exact. You know, fifteen hundred bucks per unit.
Yeah.
He's basically double, we're double dipping, which I don't think is fair.
Yeah, that should have been discussed before.
Yeah, but he hasn't paid that fee yet.
What you're suggesting is if we, if we make him pay the six hundred thousand, he's paid for the road improvements, and now we're going back and saying, okay, you paid for the road improvements. But we're also gonna hit you with fifteen hundred, or whatever it is for the road impact, every time you take up building permit, that's, that's double dipping.
Yeah, no, I agree, we can't do that, but if we say, look, if we divide it by four fifty, every bill, every. One up there is gonna pay eleven thousand five or six hundred, uh, then at the time they buy that building permit, they'll have to pay them. Then, then it's not double dipping, it'd be one charge, one time.
So that, yeah, so with, that doesn't give us the money to fund the improvement.
We would have to fund the improvement upfront, with our impact fees and then pay those back over time.
Right.
I don't know what else to do, Scott. This is the same problem we're having everywhere.
Which, if we go that route, I would say I'm, I'm in favor of that, as long as we create a district, that anybody else that comes in on that road, whether it's five years or. Ten years, would pay the same fee, and then either that goes back to us, that we put, you know, basically come back to us. If, if that's legal.
Shots on that. Basically, we're, basically creating a special impact area, or uh.
Just, just like up at Snow Basin.
Or you mean like we've done with the sewer out west? Like special areas where.
Yes, or, or like up at Snow Basin where we put that extra, that's a tax though.
Yeah, that was actually a tax.
Right.
And this would not be a tax area, this is, this is an impact fee.
Could we create a.
So it'd be just like we did with the uh, impact, the lift station.
We've done that with five areas out west.
It'd be the same thing if we don't.
Exact same thing. Yes.
Yeah, I mean, if the impact fee analysis, the impact fee facility plan showed different areas justifying different fees, yeah, then we could do that, it's like within sewer.
Well, yeah, to me, that's the answer.
I agree, I'd support Commissioner Foreman, what about you?
I mean, that was a practical matter, do you have any concerns with that?
Just logistics of collecting it, just like we have with lift stations.
I mean, legally, it should be fine, if we go that route.
Yeah.
We could use existing impact fees to pay for it, and then recoup the cost through the eleven thousand dollar impact fee.
We can use existing fees to pay for it if it's in our.
Impact fee.
Facilities.
Would it apply to just these subdivisions, or do you want it to apply to more than just these subdivisions?
I think it ought to apply to the drainage up there, because there's odds are that others will come in, but they come in so slow up there. I think you'd just have to say, okay, other than these two, how many people, buildings we had up there the last five years in that drainage? There'd probably be half a dozen.
Well, do you want this to apply to the chalais at Ski Lake and the legends at Hawkins Creek?
They're not part of them.
Everything, well, they're, they all access off of that intersection.
The chalais.
About the other side.
Undeveloped property?
Well, it's developed, but not all the homes have been built.
So they haven't taken, they haven't taken that building permit.
So yes, would be the answer?
Yeah.
So every.
So now you're not fifty-one, now you're eighty-one.
So all those.
I agree. So, everybody that's already built is not going to have to pay that.
They lucked out.
But if you have not built yet, you're paying that, that's what we're saying.
That's how I see it.
Okay.
And that would include, you know, we have some lots, there are some lots that are legal lots going up Snow Basin.
Sure.
That would, you know, I'm sure maybe half a dozen, that should also be included in that.
Yeah. So as we look at these.
That's true.
So as we look at these right here, all of those, no net access on that road.
Correct.
Correct.
They're all on the side.
Yep.
Hawkins Creek, there's probably still lots in there.
Yeah, there's lots in Hawkins Creek, there's lots in the chalais.
So, Sean, you're saying these few lots right here.
Lots in there, yeah, exactly.
To me, that's the fairest way to do it.
Yeah, there's a bit more of.
I agree with Gage.
If you've already built, you just got your, uh, you know, bonus.
Yeah, good for you.
You lucked out.
You lucked out.
I agree with that.
But I don't think you put it on the back of fifty-one, if we've got two, two or three times that more that will come in and take advantage of that.
Agreed. I think we need to sit down and do an estimate of how many we think will come in the next five years.
Well, you could easily pull up any lot that's recorded.
Yes, it's not built on.
That's not built on.
Scott, this could run into the deficit, several hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Oh, several hundred thousand, you said we had six in there.
Yeah, so, but is this all we're gonna do with roads and back piece? So that's my concern is like, with the sewer, we have enough for that one time, but we don't have enough for five, so it's gonna be my same question, we have enough for this one, do we, are we gonna do anymore?
Don't we take them one at a time?
Well, I mean, yeah, but we're, we're setting ourselves up with another one and done solution, right? What's the long-term solution if we're gonna keep running into this?
Raise your impact fees?
Raise the fee, we would look at that when we review the impact fees, and look at what your deficit is, and that would be.
Yeah, I mean, that, I, that's not what we want to do, but if we want more money in there, that's the only way to do it.
Yeah, it's the only way to do it.
Yeah, and you can't keep it in there for too long, so we've gotta have our plans.
What is the timeframe?
So we're supposed to have a plan that's been within five years.
Five years.
And they can start asking for it back after within six.
The problem is, we have. The problem is, we have really a different, two different fee structures here. We have the one lot that's being built out there all alone, and then we have a subdivision like this where the impact is direct to the, uh, maintenance has been done on the road, the rebuild. It just runs through the impact fee to get there.
Well, I think that's the fairest way to go, but I think we should also start now taking a look at anything else around that perimeter of, uh, the lake that's gonna lead into the same possible scenario, which would include the other Osprey Ranch and.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, that other Osprey, that is directly proportionate to impact, because that intersection doesn't exist at all.
Yeah.
For you to come in and say, a hundred percent of this impact is on the developer, I would, I would agree with that.
Yeah.
It should be a hundred percent on the developer.
Yeah.
I'd time directly to.
It doesn't even exist until they.
Yep.
And I, I know they have spoke with you, I know. Yeah, maybe that's what should have happened on this case. It didn't.
A little hard.
All right, so Gage, are you, are you set enough on this? You're ready to make some kind of a motion?
Yeah, I am.
You think you need a motion?
Or, or you can just give us direction, and I think that's fine.
Well, I, I just put it in the form of a direction that you can either concur or not.
Let me think about it, but if you just do it in the form of a direction, we really haven't done anything official. And this is a meeting, we could do something here.
It is a meeting, I mean, I guess it's up to you. You're not approving a resolution or a contract or anything like that. You're providing direction to the staff here.
But we are making a motion or a action here that's gonna directly affect these guys and their, what they're gonna be charged.
And, yeah, I mean, ultimately, it'll come back before you in final form for you to approve, once you get the impact fee analysis, facilities plan, and have to enact, yeah, enact the impact fee. But certainly, I mean, there's nothing stopping you from doing it in the form of a motion now if you choose to.
Do you want a motion?
I do want a motion.
Yeah, all right, so Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we direct staff to, uh, regarding the, regarding the impact fees for Snow Basin Road. Also, an old Snow Basin Road and the highway, that they incorporate a provision in statute that allows any existing lot owner or a future lot owner that is no lot, that has not built at this point in time to be part of that service area and that, uh, an impact fee be charged on, on building permits on that particular segment, whatever that may be. And, and they come to us with numbers, because we don't know what the, you know, numbers would be.
Correct.
Okay, so that would take in any undeveloped lot, or excuse me, any developed lot not yet built on. That would also take in any developed lot that is not yet built on.
Correct.
Or undeveloped lots as well, for the future. Yeah, so if somebody comes in and subdivides in the future, and they have ten lots, they are part of that group.
By developed, you mean recorded?
Recorded. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good there.
Recorded lot.
Okay, let me ask you a question in regards to. I would like that, make that official right now, so that we don't have ten lots coming in in the next three weeks.
What do we need to do to make that?
Well, also, we need the resolution for that.
Can we just make that part of our policy, since it's, it's in, we've taken an official action when we're doing it? Can we just say, look, we're not gonna, we're only, uh, we're gonna, uh, levy that based on where they're going?
In order for that current impact fee ordinance to be amended, there has to be the impact fee facilities plan and impact fee analysis updates. So that would have to be done, you'd have to adopt that, go through the process that we love so much for um, amending a plan and an impact fee analysis. It's cumbersome, it's in the statute, that way to, I guess, what is it, a public process that takes a lot?
But I don't see the issue. Let's say somebody has, now sees that, and they say, okay, we're gonna come in with ten more lots. If they come in and they record those lots, they become part, you know, based on this, they would be, become part of that uh, area that would have to pay impact fees.
Other than we haven't levied the fee yet.
Well, so.
Well, when they pull a building.
When they pull.
Well, yeah.
When they, but we'll have that, but I tend to pull the building permit.
What if they build, uh, decide to do it next week?
Well, I don't, we can't go that fast.
I think it'll be like, what, sixty days at least.
I, I guess the other part of that is. I don't, I don't think it could happen that fast.
If somebody comes to pull a building permit, they might, we might have two or three squeaked by, but if somebody's coming in to subdivide.
Yeah.
We're going to say.
I'm not talking about subdivisions.
Okay.
I'm talking about the individual building, because we just pointed out thirty or forty of them.
Yes.
So you're saying they came in there, coming tomorrow.
Your concern is that they came in for a building permit on an existing lot.
That's right, because you know who's gonna suffer? Us. I mean, we're the bank.
Yeah.
Backing this up, and if they come in, we're gonna take the hit.
No, I.
Well, at that point, you could always, I mean, the analysis and facilities plan would not be done yet. You take into account what's already been pulled and maybe adjust the numbers.
I understand where you're going. That's gonna be unfair now.
I don't think you're gonna see a lot in that category, but I don't know. I mean, that's a good, could happen.
Are you so concerned about it that you're willing to push pause on any building permits?
Well, we could do that. We could just make more for him in building permits in this area. Boy, that.
It's, but it's the same. Somebody pulled a building permit yesterday, let's just say, they just happened to squeak by, right? So there may be a few, and when, when you're ready to pass this ordinance, we'll just take the number of lots that are now standing, then each or three that squeak.
I just think you do.
Someone did that yesterday. It was unfair, but that's life.
Yeah, I, I don't do that any different than the ones that have a home up there right now, if they slip under that radar. But I don't see that that's gonna be a huge number.
Well, there's nothing to stop, stops us, well, there is two, we haven't done it officially. All right, we've got a motion in a second. Let's follow it. All fair and sound.
All right, all right.
Bye.
Okay, it's done.
Thank you.
Well, we're three minutes.
Yeah, three minutes over.
Thanks, guys.
Hey, that was a great discussion.
Yeah.
You know, we need to hold that kind of discussion more often on these things.
John on this? Yeah, we'll, we'll get, we'll get in touch with John.
Yeah, but you had an update, and if I'm John, I'm saying, well, you know, I got six of them, I want to take in right now. Of course, he doesn't have any roads in the air.
Yeah. Miss right away's way. Yeah, right away's way.
Commissioner, we're gonna get back with the tour. We're gonna hopefully talk about roads and cul-de-sacs. We'll schedule that for another work session.
Okay, thank you. All right, it's three o'clock.
Oh, you got Brian on?
Yeah, we got Brian on there. Uh, let me unmute him. Who's got the?
It's over there. I got it.
Oh, Tucker, thank you, sir. Mrs. Bell's favorite son-in-law.
I am the favorite.
All right, Brian, unmute yourself. You in?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
We can. Wow, it's good to see, it's good to see your smiley face.
Thanks. Well, and I've got some more good news to report this week. Um, our case numbers.
That is so good.
Our, our case numbers, a- as well as all the other indicators we're watching, like our, our percent positive tests, our wastewater data, our hospital syndromic data. All of that is continuing to decline from what we've been experiencing over the last six weeks. So, um, we're in a good spot in, in that downward trend. We're not quite to the numbers, uh, that we were at before the Omicron variant entered in the state, but I think in the next two weeks, we should reach that point, um, with our trending.
That is good news.
We're up to a total of seventy-two thousand, six hundred and forty-three positive cases in our health district. We currently have, uh, that's an increase of eight hundred and eighty-two, uh, over what we reported last week, but that's down. You'll remember, uh, back on January twenty-fourth, I reported ten thousand new cases then. So we've really, really come down in those numbers. Our seven-day average is one hundred and twenty-eight new cases a day. That's down from two hundred and twenty-five last week, so ninety-seven fewer a day we're experiencing right now. We have, uh, six thousand, two hundred and forty-four active cases. That's, uh, down from ten thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight last week, so about four thousand, seven hundred decrease. Uh, so again.
Oh, Brian, let me ask you a question now then, specifically to this. You, you, when the infectious rate and hospital rate started going down, you reported to us that Omicron was, uh, as infectious, but it was not as harmful. So we, we didn't have as many in the hospital, and those in the hospital, the death rate went way down. So now that the infections are, seem to be going down, is something happening in the infection rate, or are we just smarter people?
Well, so the Omicron variant's more infectious than the original virus. But what we're seeing now in this decline of new cases is that the, we've, we've got a, a little over sixty percent of our population fully vaccinated. Uh, so that's a protective factor that, and that also helps reduce the severity of hospitalizations we're seeing. Um, we have now people in our, a large number of people in our community that have, uh, developed a natural immunity, uh, so that if they get the, the virus again, their disease burden will be less than, than what it was before. Um, so, and that's another factor that plays into the less, uh, less severity of the illness or hos- fewer hospitalizations, or I should say fewer, fewer people in the ICU unit. We are seeing, you know, general hospitalizations uptick over the last few weeks, but the ICU usage has gone down. Um, and that, it's kind of the normal pattern of, of, of an infectious organism in a population. We, we've seen a rapid growth. Uh, a large number in our population experienced a disease, and now we're, we'll see the decline. It'll still be in our community, um, just a little bit harder for it to find, find the people that, uh, that are most susceptible to it. Um, and, and that's.
So then, under that scenario, you're saying that our ability to withstand this has gone up and the transmission rate as a result is going down. And under that scenario, you, you probably expect it to continue, unless we have another major variation, right?
Correct, yeah, we expect the numbers to go down, um, and find, uh, find kind of a stabilized rate in our community. Uh, and then it, it'll be interesting to watch the coronavirus and how it reacts in our population. Uh, you know, is it, is it a consistent number throughout the year, or do we have, will we have periods of the year where it increases and decreases like we experienced with influenza? I think those are all questions that we'll be exploring with, with this new new disease. And, and again, the, the other question is variants, what new, uh, variants will develop and how how will they impact our community? All of those are things that we'll be watching closely in the future.
Great.
Let's see, deaths, uh, we're reporting a large number of deaths compared to last week. Um, thirteen new deaths over last week, so we're up to four hundred and three, uh, as of this morning. But some of those, uh, happened before January fourteenth, going back to the first of the year. Um, deaths are reported when we get the, uh, the notification from the state medical examiner's office, and some of them take longer for, for the medical examiner's office to classify, uh, than others. So sometimes we'll get a, um, a bump in the number of deaths over a week period, but it's really, it's not deaths that happened over the last week. It's just the record, uh, the records and the determinations kind of, kind of being made, um, just in the timeframe that they're made with, with their office. So, um, just wanted to get, to kind of share that, as we have this big increase, our, our numbers the last few weeks have been a couple new deaths a week, between two and four new deaths a week. But this week, we're, we have thirteen new deaths we're reporting, but just be aware, some of those go back to the beginning of the year. Hospitalizations, um, we're seeing a- again, a decrease in the use of our ICU beds. Uh, so we're reporting twenty-six out of thirty being used right now. Um, only, uh, only seven of those are COVID-related. Um, and that's the lowest we've been on ICU beds.
That's huge.
COVID-related, it's going all the way back to, uh, September of twenty twenty-one. Uh, normal, uh, hospital, other hospital beds, I should say, two hundred and sixty-six out of four hundred and fifty-five being utilized for fifty-nine percent. Um, fifty of those are COVID, COVID-related hospitalizations. And our school situation is also improving, even though, uh, so we have an, an increase in the cases in our schools. Last week is a hundred and forty, and this week's two hundred and twenty-five. That's eighty-five additional active cases. Um, but what has happened in that is the Ogden School District, with them doing their virtual pause, um, their schools kind of zeroed out, and so we're seeing a little bit of growth, uh, from new cases that they've experienced uh, since they've gone back to in-person learning. Um, but the overall picture for our school situation is still declining number of cases in our students and our teachers, um, and, uh, overall, an improvement there. Only seventy-five of our schools are currently reporting at least one active COVID case. And we don't have any schools that are at their one, one percent of the test to stay threshold, uh, or, you know, to stay threshold. So the overall picture for schools, uh, is it's improving, even though we've seen a little bit of an increase in numbers this week for the school cases. Um, and then just kind of, I, I know the last few weeks have been mentioning our wastewater data, uh, and been monitoring that to see our situation, and the last, uh, two sample results reported at Central Weber and at, uh, North Davis, both were declining in the amount of, uh, of genetic material from the virus they're finding in the wastewater there. So following the same trend as the other indicators we're watching, so. So I think we're in a good spot, um, this week, and that, that's kind of the end of my report.
Well, that makes me happy.
Yeah.
Good job, Brian. Either you got a question?
No, that's good news.
Well, Brian, that's good news. We do appreciate that.
You know what? I have such a good report. I think we should take next week off, Mr. Chair. And bring it over for two weeks. Give Brian the week off. Continue to ride the downward slope.
That's true. Next week, uh, we won't be here on Monday, so Brian, take the day off.
Yeah.
I will, thank you very much.
Pay on that, Brian. We'll give you that holiday.
Appreciate that.
Very good. Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Take care.
Boy, that's good, good.
Well, I'll say.
So to everybody out there, uh, we're going on to the next item, but there's ten minutes that we've got, uh, before our people will be here. So I'm just gonna mute this until we come back on. So I'm just going to mute this until we come back on.
We never really officially closed the meeting, so we're still in uh, our open meeting. And, uh, so we'll turn, we welcome the sheriff and uh, Jeffries and Chief Perry here, and, uh, we'll turn the time over to you all.
Thank you.
You bet, Sheriff.
All right, I've got several items on my agenda that, uh, this is something that I feel that we should do with so much that's going on with Sheriff's Office, uh, with things that we proposed in the past. I'm going to try and meet with you guys rarely just to keep the information coming. So when you're asked, you guys know what's going on as well and at the same time provide feedback. And, uh, anything that you feel is necessary that we can work closer as a team. Uh, Chief Perry and kind of Jeffries are here on, uh, tow contracts. And then they're going to, uh, provide some info and then when they're done, they'll be leaving and I'll go through the rest of my agenda. So.
Correct. So we've, we've got, uh, we've got a contract that'll be coming across to a commission meeting shortly. Um, we've been working with legal, uh, preliminarily, everyone signed off. We'll need to go through the system and, and, and then, and then come to the commission, but we just wanted to come and just present uh, quickly on, on the direction that we're headed. So you guys, uh, were aware and could can ask any questions you have. So I'll let Jeffries just go over it really quick and
We had talked previous on, on the situation.
I know we'd heard about this, or I'd heard about it, yeah.
So, um, Brian Byrne brought up the contract, went through everything. Um, that's what I have copies of now. Um, for the other two that, um, weren't in the conversation before. So Ogden City and through Dispatch was running, um, the rotation for the, the tow trucks, which turned into quite a big pain. They switched, went to kind of a single source still. Um, so now nobody runs that rotation contract. So if, if people show up, say we call them for
Hold on, you say nobody runs it with Ogden City?
Yeah, well, in the county right now, we don't have anybody like maintaining that.
Managing the rotation.
Like managing.
Yeah, that's not true. Nine one one, if Tina does that
No.
On a regular basis.
As, as far as calling and following up, like if, if somebody turns down a tow.
No, she doesn't follow up.
They're not following up.
She doesn't follow up on anything.
And, and she doesn't
She just goes on the rotation through this.
And they don't, and they don't, they don't go down and do inspections. They don't do hearings if somebody
She just simply goes through the list.
That's what Ogden City
Yeah, okay. You're correct. So with that, if, if a company, like I said, there's a crappy, uh, travel trailer that's, that's abandoned or whatnot. If we call them and they're like, we're not going to get any money out of that. They just either don't show up or turn it down.
Right.
There's no consequences to that right now. So Ogden City has gone with, um, uh, Ogden Auto, single source, and we're, we're trying to piggyback off of their contract and do the similar thing. I've talked with, uh, Ogden Auto. They said that they more than happy to to take on the contract and they would have no problem fulfilling both, um, for us and Ogden at the same time. So that's, that's where we're at.
Dispatch supports the change. They, it, the rotation is kind of a headache for them. So they, they, they support, uh, agencies.
Wouldn't that put all the other tow companies pretty much out of the deal or the business? Yeah. It's a big deal.
The, uh, I mean, obviously so. Personal preference, they can still tow, you know, as far as anybody else calling the other tow companies to, to do it, but yeah, it would go just single for us to make it a whole lot quicker. And talking with Ogden, they, they've been really happy with the change. Um, because they support, uh, like flat tires. They'll come out, handle any of the, any of Ogden City's vehicles and if they need tow and stuff like that, costs them nothing because it just ran, um, they make their money off of all the fees and everything afterwards. So it doesn't cost Ogden City anything to, to have them on board.
I, boy, I I just taped it, you know, if I'm a, if I'm a tow and I invested a couple hundred thousand dollars in my truck and all of a sudden,
This is just Weaver County Sheriff's Office.
Yeah, the amount so the amount of volume, if they're depending on. The dispatch to survive their business there, I'm gonna make it anyway, so.
He's talking with them, they get about one tow a day off of the rotation list is all basically what.
If we go single source, they're they're towing about one car a day, so you split that among others, like that's.
There's quite a few. A year or month, I mean.
At two hundred and twenty-five bucks.
We've we've ran into a lot of problems with with the tow companies not showing up or. It takes them an hour, hour and a half to get there, so we have to call somebody else and just trying to get away from.
So you're they they sold some of these little guys to service. Suck.
Yeah, it's a matter of they don't have any dependable, accountable service right now, and that's what. That's what it comes down to, is when they call for it and you look at the time that they have if they have to wait out there on site. You know, for an hour for somebody to show up and they've got a debt, our cost from the county. Right, you know, goes after that with the sole source, they can basically say, look, put brands, you're not here within certain period. Thirty minutes or whatever.
Their rate right now is they'll be there within twenty minutes.
Yeah, so that's why like there's some accountability to this, that saves us dollars. I mean, I appreciate what you're saying about the companies, but you got so many of these companies that don't want it.
We'll spend we'll spend four hours on the side of road on a car because what they do is they shop, you put it on a rotation. And you have a vehicle that the company will shop, so it would be on multiple rotations and so Dispatch calls them. And they'll get, well, can you give me more information, what kind of car is it? Well, it's a ninety-eight Nissan Sentra and they'll say. Uh, we don't want that one because they know they're not gonna make any money on the return on that. And so then they'll say, hey, move us to the bottom of the rotation, we're gonna pass. And you go through four or five companies like that, now now I've tied up an officer for four or five hours. While Dispatch is trying to go through these companies that are shopping, because some vehicles they lose money on. Some vehicles they make money on and they're they they shop the rotation. Because they don't want to take a vehicle that's gonna cost them money and that and so there is that's the trade off as we get the accountability in the contract.
The other thing is is just the other the other piece of this is is I'll bet. Has it gone through purchasing?
Yes.
Okay, so you have gone through purchasing and and they're okay with it.
Everybody was on board with it.
And the attorneys.
Yes.
Okay, okay. Commissioner Harvey, also, if you're John Doe Public and you happen to need a tow truck and you decide to call nine one one or Dispatch, no police related. There's still a rotation list there too. Okay. Okay.
Yeah, again, the the amount of business that it's. I don't I don't see it impacting them, for the benefit the county gets out of it exceeds.
No, no, you're good, okay, all right, thanks, bye. All right, any questions? More? Oh, that's good, all right. Go to the next one.
Okay, you guys wanna copy of the contract?
I don't need one. That's you're bringing that, what, next week or?
Uh, yeah, I'll drop it off.
Although I am gonna call Tina.
Yeah, I think Tina'd probably agree with that.
Go ahead, help me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. And I believe that if we did our own single source, when we do, when we had to have a. Winnebago or a moving van or something removed, it will be removed rather than turned down. Well, the other thing about this is if you've already gone through procurement on this. Then they've 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 gone ahead and you know, you've gone through everything to meet, so it's not really a single source, these guys want it.
Yes, yeah, correct, now, it was actually it was actually Jason Horn's, it was Jason Horn's idea to piggyback off of their contract. It was his idea, he said, look, if you go RFP, chances are. You're gonna select the same company that Ogden did, because they're gonna come on top as long as as long as they can support it, so that's why we went met with them and they said.
But this went through, we're supporting that.
Yeah. Increase.
My house, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, make sure.
Thanks.
I still. Eighty-one million.
I'm with you, I'm gonna steal a soda.
I'm gonna I'm gonna get back on, yeah, I haven't been on it for two years, but.
All right, um, some good news here, as you guys remember that we all supported each other, you guys specifically supported Sheriff's Office with jail medical. And this came across my desk the other day. Uh, this is a lawsuit that came against the the county or the Sheriff's Office. And this is the involving a an individual. And in the lawsuit, I'll just quote the 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 notice of panel discussion, excuse me, decision. The panel reviewed the notice of intent to commence malpractice action.
So hold on a second, who's the panel?
It's the 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 court, where is the sign of the court?
Okay.
So they're 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 saying, we want to sue, here's here's our evidence and then the panel reviews, see if there's a to go forward, yeah, sorry. And the medical and.
Never heard that term, that's going in 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 association with the court.
Yes.
So that was news to me.
The panel reviewed the notice of intent to commence a malpractice action, notice of intent and the medic. And the medical and the jail records provided by the petitioner. And here's they'll just go straight to the conclusion of the law. No healthcare provider patient relationship exists between Weaver County Jail and the the individual. Weaver County did not owe a provider hyphen patient duty of care, therefore this matter is non meritorious as to Weaver County.
That's good reason to have a third party.
Yep, I thought that was worth sharing, so if anybody asks, is the jail contracting is working?
Yeah.
There's an example, yep.
Where prior to this, they definitely wouldn't have left us in.
Well, because we we managed our own nurses.
We're the provider.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was a good one, man, a boy.
That's good. All right, I'm just here to also reaffirm our support to support you and you commissioners that are down there, legislators trying to. Help with funding with jail expansion, whatever I can do, I'm always available. Uh, February twenty-fifth, we are having, I got my email, we're having an open house on our new facility. It's designed to invite the the not the public, but the elected officials within the county. Anybody, emergency management, other law enforcement agencies to say, hey, this is what the county has, this is the service we provide. Here's where your tax dollars is going, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, eleven AM to two PM, if you want to invite somebody. You feel should come out, please feel free to. It is open house style, uh, we're doing it just a little different, we are gonna have the actual emergency managers and our search and rescue teams. Inside the building to field any questions, it's not just to look, it's like, well, what is this for and why this? So we're gonna make sure that it's, uh, we're well represented. All right. Next thing, drones, we've touched about on drones a while ago. I.
How's it working so far?
We're killing it, and I'll tell you why, I sincerely believe the drones are.
Um, yep. Wave of the future.
Yes, they're the way they they are revolutionary today as the hand radios and radios work to the law enforcement back in the thirties.
I'd say you're probably right.
Now, we've been working with, you guys know that search and rescue guy that does our drones, Kyle Northvers, he's also a cat just got promoted as captain. Uh, he flies for Alaskan Airlines, he is helping us with our COAs. Uh, it's with the with the FAA to fly in proper zones and areas. He's also vastly knowledgeable on anything to do with drones, technology and so forth. We've been following a federal law and some laws have changed to where certain certificates are not needed like they used to. So we want to operate a drone from a nest, the nest would be essentially the Sheriff's Office. So we can deploy a drone from the office. And head it towards the the place of a call, uh, keep in mind, we will get questions if this thing is fully fully enforced or about to launch about. Fourth Amendment issues, spying and all this.
Yeah.
Chula Vista down there near San Diego has been ahead of us for three or four years, they've gone through all that. We actually sent a group down there several months ago, uh, we brought back all their data, we brought back their SOPs, their policies, their procedures. And we're following, we're working closely with county attorney's office to make sure as we move towards that. That we were doing the right way with, you know, not having to have all these these issues and just just trying to, we're not gonna recreate the will, it's already been created. The awesome thing is is as you know, these drones are designed to their first response drones, they're not patrols of drones, they're not just out there looking around. We even have policies where the 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 direction of the camera is in a in a position as it's out there, but once the call or case is over. It goes into a horizontal position, goes back home and doesn't film anything else. That's just an idea, um, the data that we're gonna present to you here in the near future, uh, it talks about. I think it was there are several thousand calls in Chula Vista and there was about. Can't remember the percent, it's just amazing the percent that where only the drone responded. And was determining that the incident has resolved itself or the threat, meaning not threat. But the suspicious person vehicle is out of the area, so no officers needed to respond, I mean, this is phenomenal information. Because of our shortages in our employees and so forth. I've talked to Jason Horn, I've talked to some others, Scott Park, and we'll probably ask that we'll take two of our existing positions. Shift them and make them drone pilots and use some of this money to to, uh. Get the the equipment that we need, we we're gonna use the emergency center in Sheriff's Office as our pilot house, if you will. And we'll we'll put this all out in a structured plan, so you're very well, but I just wanna let you know that's coming. There's a lot of excitement to this and and honestly, if the drone program was the way I envision it. We will reduce the need of additional officers at some point. I firmly believe that the way our calls and the way with the contract cities, we should be a hundred twenty officers. To meet that need, when you talk about response times, the field, the 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 safety field that you get with officers. I don't think if we were to have a great drone system, I think we could reduce officers by somewhere around ten to fifteen percent. And what that does is it it reduces liability, it increases safety, there's less chance of an officer getting injured. Because there's less officers, so anyway, that's coming. Oh, the also neat thing about this is. There's a program called Live nine one one that we're super excited about. Live nine one one is a program that we can have every officer listening to the phone call as it's coming into dispatch. And those of you who are familiar with dispatch, if you are to truly count the time when, say, Commissioner Jenkins sees a an offense. And by the time he thinks about it, processes, I'm gonna call nine one, grabbing his phone, dialing it. And go through all, you know, what's your what's the address of your emergency, it is several minutes. Before it's put out, but as the call comes in, we can have drones or we can have officers already headed that way. This is this is this is huge, this is another big deal.
So is that new?
It's newer, very new, yes, uh, we.
I haven't heard that from Tina.
Dispatch has some initial rever reservations, but as you guys know, we like to come out and try and prep it before we launch it. And after we went through the process, what's going on down in Chula Vista. They are on board, also what we want to do with the drones is we want to include a screen or two in their place. So they can see the drone footage as well, all this does, for the most part, is there's more people involved, we can react quicker and we can have a whole heck of a lot more accuracy. So if you got a guy, for instance, a Maverick that's flipping a stick and maybe acting really weird. And you get calls in, it says, oh, there's a man with a knife, he's crazy. You get the drum, I mean, officers could come, you get the drone out there, you can zoom in and say, well, this looks like a mental health case and it's a stick, not a gun. Or a knife, then you can slow down the big response, maybe one officer and then get the medical mental health responders out there. So anyway, a lot more detail on that to come.
I like it. You know, it's interesting, you're not sure where this is all gonna go, this drone stuff. If you noticed, I don't know if you happened to notice that the. Game was just over. Prior to the game. They showed some shots of the sky and things that they were creating in the sky. They were, uh, they were objects that were lit up and they were making all different. Formations and pictures and everything, well, they were all drones individually. And they had maybe. Two or three hundred in each one of these, and the drones were all communicated communicating with each other. So that they moved as a group to create this, and then they moved back to create this, it was like, oh, my gosh. Look at that go right there, I couldn't believe what I was viewing. Have you ever seen that movie where the guy created the drones and the little drones went after things and. You know, he created a, uh, it was amazing what the guy created, but this was exactly what he created. Where the drones were just that big and he opened up a suitcase that had a thousand in there, they all just, when they saw, in fact, I think that was the name of a swarm.
Really?
Yeah.
Was that yesterday?
Oh, yeah, they were doing that yesterday.
Huh, I didn't see it.
That was prior to the game, it was in the pregame.
Oh.
But I couldn't believe some of the things I saw and it was all of the. Uh, you you couldn't see how big they were, you know, because they're all way off in the distance, but they were there. And then they changed to another formation and then do another formation, like, oh, my gosh, look at these things go.
Wow.
And they were working in conjunction with each other. I was blown away by it.
Anyway, uh, the other thing with drones, uh, finally is we're we're looking at the FFA to help us, we wanna. Consider putting a a nest on a either one of the fire stations up in the upper valley and have it outfitted to drop life preservers. To those, we had four drownings last year, and the other option we could do is. AEDs too, is to drop them off to in certain situations, so we're we're headed in a great direction right now with those. All right, uh, Contract Cities discussion, I let you guys know about that a while ago, uh, we still have one city that's, uh, wanting to do their own thing. And I don't know how that's gonna work, we've had, uh, I met with the city manager, the mayor. Along with chief, actually Lieutenant Jeffries and Chief Perry. And after the meeting, it was concluded, they just wanted more information from us, so we're gonna come up with a some sort of a stat. Uh, broke down into the sections that they wanted, and so they agreed also to improve their communication to their council members, which often don't get some information, but that's okay.
Be nice to have some important council people rather than.
Boy, if the mayors would just and city man would just tell everybody what's going on. None of this, a lot of this wouldn't be a problem, but they don't, they pick and choose what they want, but but that's that's the way it is. Okay, um. Staffing levels, we are technically down thirty-three in corrections. Uh, which means we are, we're actually, if you look, there's two ways, you've heard this term, on paper and then what's real. So what's real meaning, they're being trained, so they're not on their own, so if you look at it, they're being trained or in the academy, not on their own, we're down forty-two. But on paper, who signed up and who we're paying is thirty-three, correction or excuse me, enforcement, we're down thirteen, non swarm staff, we're down seven. Which is a total of about a little over fifty. Um.
How does that compare to a year ago?
Uh, roughly the the. On enforcement, we're doing okay, the buyout, which we believe was very successful with the county and quite candidly, there was people in that buyout that. Worked really good for for everybody, um, uh, we had, we set some really good rebound on the enforcement side, but the corrections, it's like, once they left. We just haven't been able to bring very many back, so it's just tough, it's a tough market, it's not just us, it's it's the other jails and as you know, we were down in the prison tour, they were down twenty-five percent. And everybody's just doing everything they can, we know that in this wage war, we do compete directly with enforcement. But on the other hand, we we don't, because not every city has a jail. Right, and so we're in a different game, but that's the fact, we do have people from the jail. Uh, that have been offered, being paid one for one to go to enforcement starting, which is just mind boggling.
Wow.
Yeah, it's unbelievable, okay, um. I got a call, well, in the law L E L C. Something legislator, law enforcement, I'm sure you two know what that is, it's the law enforcement that group comes together. There's a death penalty cases coming up today, there's supposed to be a lot of action on that at four PM, it starts any minute, uh, we've got our group down there. There's some other bills, it looks like, uh.
You're talking about the death penalty bill?
Death penalty bill.
It's going to committee today.
Yeah, they're voting on it, they're talking, voting on it today.
In committee.
In committee, yeah.
Are they talking about removing it altogether?
Yes. And then the other a couple others that that are on is the, it looks like Matt Gwen's out of committee, got passed for to officers can return within ninety days. Uh, instead of a year wait, uh, we believe, we were told that the League of Cities and Towns was objecting to it because they thought, well, calculate all the spots are missing and all these people come back to work. Because they thought, well, calculate all the spots are missing and all these people come back to work. It costs us X amount of dollars. Uh, the reality is, commissioners, I just don't believe that fixing URS. The what they wanna do in this time comeback is not gonna create an avalanche of people coming back to work. It's just not.
Oh, I agree with that.
Yeah, they're not.
Plus, I I've never supported that ever. When they, it used to be two years and lowered it to one year. I I've almost felt that people have the rights to do with the darn well, please, if they choose and wanna come back, we ought to be grateful they came back.
Yeah.
So I don't care. I've always been, I'm a, I'm the opinion that they ought to be able to come back anytime, some mail hire.
I think because of the market where people are making so much money, not being law enforcement. I mean, think about it. If I retired today with twenty years, I'm forty-eight years old. And I get this other job and I'm making really good money working eight to five, Monday through Friday. Would I wanna go back to work in twelve hour shifts in graveyards?
Yeah.
No way.
Yeah.
Anyway.
It's not realistic.
Um, there's a, there's a, there's three bills out there, two that's uh may have an impact mostly on the counties and. Uh, the sheriff and some other player, Andreg, Wyler. Ballard to to, it's a, form committees to have some uh. Uh, data to come back from the jail and we said it isn't so right and so forth. I I I'm doing a really bad job of explaining it, but uh Wyler's telling his bill is gonna be better than Trump everyone else's. Wyler's now supporting Ballard on theirs is to create a coordinating council where people are fine. Generally, I'm in supportive of this. I think it's what we need to be doing. I called Sheriff Sparks one day and I says, hey, if you need this kind of data out of your jail, how do you get it? He says, it's hard. It's almost probably can't get it. Problem with the jails are is some of us are on our own unique systems of data and data entry. They don't connect. And so you have to do a lot of hand stuff, so.
So Melissa's been working with Ballard on that.
Yes.
So we're aware of it.
Yes.
I still more than that.
Yeah, so I. I hope whatever they do, because if they're, because the thing that bothers me, which it says the sh- the sheriff shall, prosecuting office shall. It's okay, but when you start saying shall and then there's this demand for this kind of uh data and we don't have the the time. Uh, staffing or the finances to build a system, how are we gonna pay for, how are we gonna do it? So I've had a couple of conversations with uh Sheriff's Association. They're working on, I've talked to Ballard myself. I told him my concerns. I says, in principle, I think it's a great idea. But I'm just concerned if there's a shell and there's a demand and there's a timeline, I'm gonna get arrested or something like that, so.
They ought to fund it. Comes down to funding.
It is.
So and you act, they should be backing you up.
Yeah, they should.
Yeah, I mean, they don't wanna put, they can't put this on the, well, they can, but they shouldn't put this on the back of the counties. Another unfunded mandate.
Another unfunded.
You know, I told you, not everything you do on there is a hundred percent. You don't believe that, I know, but I just think.
And while I share this next thing, can you pull up my slideshow that I have that I wanna share with you guys?
Have no idea.
It's it's five slides.
So, just so you know, I've got Sarah Swan sitting out there, ready to come in.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. You said you wanted fifteen minutes, and so.
I told him thirty.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
Well, I'm sorry, that didn't get relayed to me.
Well, that's okay, but I told him it's, I said it would be fifteen minutes on my end, but commissioners had questions and all that, then it'd be thirty.
Okay.
Okay, our awards banquet is coming March fifteenth. Just to let you know, we hope you guys can attend.
What day is it?
The nineteenth of March. We'll, we'll send out some emails to make sure you're all invited. Okay, so just real quick, I felt this was appropriate. Go to the next slide. We did a, I did an appreciation. Uh, day uh for this, for command staff and employees. We went to Roosters and had lunch. And then right after that, uh, we, well, this is actually out of order. We went out to the Ogden Gun Club and did a fundraiser for the Ogden Clay Dusters, which is a youth group in the area, in our area. They shoot out at the Ogden Gun Club. We donated from the Sheriff's Foundation, a thousand dollars. And then another gentleman with the foundation of the board gave them two hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, we shot fifty rounds. They kicked our butts. Yes, these young kids, they had a nine-year-old shooting uh forty, forty-five pigeons out of fifty.
Whoa.
So we went out there Friday and shot with them. It was a great PR. It was great to support for youth, it's a great support for guns. Second Amendment element there. It was fantastic event. Before this event, next slide. Is we went to uh, after lunch, we went to Catholic Community Services. We went out there and we did about an hour and a half of service. We sorted peanut butter. We put bags in the boxes for kids and families in need. It was a fantastic event. And lastly, here's a quick little video. If you just go to the bottom in that picture in the main, you'll see a little arrow at the bottom. It's a twelve second video of our team in action. Oh, she'll uh, no uh. No audio coming out. Anyway.
Wow, you uh.
We're killing it.
That's quite a line there.
Yeah.
Poor Matt. Phil Kristen, she moves that past you, poor guy.
Yeah, we had twenty of us from the sheriff's office participating in service.
Wow.
That was it. Good. So just wanna let, give you an update what we're doing.
That's great.
And the last question, what can I do for you guys?
We want you to sit here and talk about.
Keep up, keep up the good work.
Stay right here.
Do payroll.
Okay.
We wanna talk.
Day the payroll, the pay, pay period in.
Timing.
As far as timing. This, this impacts you a little bit from. We changed it from Thursday to Friday.
Yeah, yes.
I will. All right, Harv, so.
Sure. How are you?
Sure.
Oh, boy. Surrounded.
All right, so Jeremy, we're done with our meeting. So this is administrative meeting right now, so we're gonna end it. So uh, we welcome you all for being here and we'll go from there. Second.
On fair shot.
Hi.
Hi.